I'd like to call this meeting to order. First order of business is the pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance is used by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, in all best of order. Can I get a recommendation to approve tonight's agenda? Have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting? Any deletions or corrections? We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Can you see the list of claims? Anybody got any questions on any of the claims? For November? We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. To accept the financial standard for the general liquor, water, sewer funds and disbursements ledgers for all funds. On that, we normally table that, but in front of you, and I think I'll let Cheryl explain this, there's some adjustments that we want to make and consider. Cheryl, you want to take the mic?
Yeah, I'll go. If you can get a little bit the top one and receipts, we received the other part of our property taxes, so we're pretty square for the year there. We're only eight grand down, but just we'll receive that in January. Well, we still have outstanding, it's going to be our LGA, which is 27,756, this pair of 8741, and then we get reimbursements from the insurance trust, which all of that total is about 30,000. And if you add that 30,000 to that 7,900 at the end there of the total revenues, that means we're about, will be about 37,000, excuse me, in the black for the year. And what I want to recommend is not transferring any funds from the liquor fund this year because of the uncertainty of what's happening, and it will deplete their current fund, they have $3,000, do not recommend it by any of the auditors. And then if you go to the second page within disbursement, I kind of highlighted and read the CARES Act funds, which were not any budgeted funds, and it makes it look like we're 25 grand off from our budgeted numbers, but those were not budgeted numbers. So if you subtract that out at the end, you can see we're, I've got CARES Act expenses unbudgeted that was 38 grand, and you can see we're 13,000 under budget for the year. So we're doing well financially without the need to transfer that money to deplete that fund. So that's my recommendation.
It's always nice to be in the black. Basically, the only, I'm glad you pointed some of that stuff out. The main thing is she would recommend not doing our normal transfer of the liquor store fund.
And actually, if you go up again on the fifth page, I'm sorry, I didn't finish them, we're actually 30 grand above budget for the year. I think so, because it's really fit in the budget that we had last year.
I'll make the recommendation that I can help people with some money out of the grant year, here's a part of the year, do the folder. I'll say.
We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Well, that's good news for the audience. It looks like we're going to end up with about a $30,000 surplus above the budget. So it's all good news, especially in a year like this.
Do you have a recommendation to table, like we usually do for the rest of the report if you want to?
Our recommendation may, we table the total next week, next week.
We have a motion, a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you. To recommend approving of the 2021 liquor store licenses for Looney's Brew. I think we'll take these one at a time. We got Looney's Brew, Sunday Sales Grawlers Off Sale, Cantilever, and Rain Lake Grill. Also tobacco license for Looney's Brew. I don't see no issues with any of them other than to approve them.
I'll make the recommendation of approval. I'll say.
We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. To recommend approval of the resolution 202014 adopting the 2021 general fund budget. Any questions on the general fund budget that we entered?
I'll make the motion for recommending approval of the resolution 202014. I'll say.
We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. I want everybody really looked that over again. This is just the meeting of the whole, so our next council meeting, if you do come up with anything on the budget, we can adjust it at our next meeting also. Right now it looks fine to me, but take a good look at it. Recommend approval of resolution 202015 adopting the tax levy.
I recommend the resolution number 202015 adopting the tax levy. I'll say.
What was the amount again?
253,000.
We have a recommendation, is there a second?
I'll say.
We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. The COVID-19 CARES Act review, any informational, Cheryl, anything on that? It's closed out now, and you've sent, what did we send, $2,300 back?
Yeah, I can go through that if you want me to, Mayor.
Pardon me?
I can go through what happened with all of it if you want me to, with all the CARES Act money.
Okay. That's just for information, we closed it out, we were able to help everybody that applied and still had a surplus left that we ended up sending back, so. Do recommend approval of the 2016 CARES Act expenditures. I think she have a list on all them that we expended the money on. Got a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Linda Salem, she, yes, you want to come forward?
Actually, I'm in at John Gafford. Is I in for office? We just wanted to tell it also, we appreciated the award that we got from CARES Act money that we applied for, being for up here in the middle of nowhere, and we have such amazing staff managing to keep the virus out of our facility, going on our security measures with no bases in staff or residents, which is a very amazing thing. But on the other hand, it disqualifies us from getting any type of state assistance and personal protective equipment, quarantine equipment, cleaning equipment, things like that, and that every penny of that went into quarantine equipment. We upgraded our technology so that we could bring our families and residents closer together and be able to safely quarantine positive COVID residents and as well as take care of our staff.
Actually, we just worked on our Zoom today, so the residents get to be able to see their families, they haven't been with their families since. That's really important to us. So we got everything set up for Zoom today, Facebook, we've got a 65 inch TV that they can actually see, we've got something to help so that they can hear. We have no idea how much this matters to the residents. It's going to be great. And, you know, we're going into Christmas, and we have, we have residents that are 98, 100 years old and have never spent a Christmas without a candle. So we are going to do our best to make it work, smile, care for those people, and we couldn't have done it without, without help. So we really do.
Well, I think that's what the fund was set up for, and we're glad we could pass on. For the reference, this is the last application that come in after we had pooled our money and there was no money left in the general pool. We had some additional funds left in our account, and we gave them a donation, I guess you call it, or whatever. We approved, we approved the last expenditure, it was around $8,000, wasn't it? And that's, that's what we're talking about right now, and it looks like it went to good use, so. Thanks again, and I think I'm glad we did it. Let's see, where am I? Just a reminder, we have the truth in taxation meeting on the 15th of December, 6:30, just a reminder of that. There's one item on the agenda here, it's the Costin lobbyist group. On that, I just got a phone call just before the, for the meeting tonight, it appears that the LCCMR funds may be released in January. There's been a stalemate in the state government with a little politics going on, I guess, but it looks like they're going to be released in January, and it was a strong recommendation that we make another application for additional funding in March. And so with that, I'd just like to table that motion there, and we'll discuss that a little further at the next meeting. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we table that.
I'll recommend table that at the one minute meeting.
All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Jen, liquor store?
Well, sadly, the governor shut us down again, which I understand why, so our members aren't the greatest, or whoever, but I kind of saw it coming, like I said in the last meeting. The plus is we just started to make gift baskets, and those are selling in copies for now. I sold 11 gift baskets just today, so that will help us with our off sale. And I'd like to give a special thanks to two individuals who have volunteered their time and effort, Berta and her friend Lois, for all their extra help to help make these baskets look as beautiful as they do. If this continues to go into the new year, which I can see it happening, we're going to maybe attempt bringing in some clothing in help with the off sale. So I really don't know anyone else that can pull it up than you on our side right now.
We can see that anything that brings in gift baskets is a plus.
Off sale is up anyway.
Yes, I'm turning those bags, $20, and we just sold up there. So guys put in order if you want to.
You know, I was watching on TV that night, the people in the room, there are orders severe here in Dr. King, you know, the video, the bars, they go solid, they're open over there.
Only certain states are shut down.
Don't try to make any sense of a bob. It's way out of control. Anyway, any questions for Jen?
I do think that December will be better with the gift baskets, we have a ton of orders coming, that's going to be at least three or four every day when I get to work, three quarters tomorrow, so. It should help.
Did, did any of those baskets sell? I see you had a bunch, I walked another one day, and you had a whole bunch of those baskets, made up them gift baskets, did they sell?
Like hotcakes.
Like hotcakes?
I sold 11 just today.
11 yesterday?
Two today.
Well, that's good.
It's our best day in off sale, sure, just today, and I think we sold eight packs today.
I don't know, the rest, you seen them, but I got to look, I thought they were.
Price is from $20 to $100. And she's selling 11. I've seen the $300 baskets, they're all pre-ordered, they're gone already.
Yeah, I thought it was a wonderful idea, and I'm glad they sold. I thought they should sell, but again, I'm not on the buying end, so. Get a recommendation to approve?
I'll make a motion here.
We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you, Jen. Nick? Well, Nick, I see you've been trying to make ice, but haven't had a whole bunch of luck.
He's in cold weather.
I noticed that you must have made those wind blocks that are over at the rink?
Yeah.
And then blue ones, you painted them blue? So I looked from a distance, I figured that's what they were. Okay. Any other issues that we have, water breaks, anything like that?
We got a lot of them yesterday.
Whereabouts?
Right behind Ed Woods over here.
Yeah, we had that, it was about last month, we had about three water breaks on the same piece of line, we would have to look at probably, where was that at again?
132.
132. Probably look, we're probably looking the spring of having to replace that junk. It's got electrolysis, the whole pipe is ate up. How many leaks did we have on it? Four leaks on the, on the same, you shut it off, and basically what it does is when you shut that line off, the rust inside, believe it or not, then drops. When you lose the pressure, you shut it off to repair it, then the rust inside the pipes drops, then when you turn the pipe back on, then you get pinhole leaks all over the place.
That was all PVC.
Out there down there, it was all PVC, long hair, it's still gas.
Well, but the bolts are all rusted off from electrolysis, correct?
Yeah.
And that's, that's what happened, so that is not the rust issue, it's just electrolysis ate up all the, the clamps, the service line, repair clamps. Yeah, right now, everything is stainless steel, you know, and those apparently weren't. They were cast iron ones, so all the new ones are stainless steel, so you got a couple of choices. How many service lines are on that line?
Twenty service lines on that?
Yeah.
Not repaired, I think there's only three left, we have another pair.
Pardon me?
Three, eleven, they haven't been repaired.
Well, then that's all we have to do, we don't have to replace the line, but we'll probably have to dig down, put three saddles on. Those are pretty much inexpensive, the hardest part is just digging down and repairing, but you don't have to repair the whole line then.
No.
So that'll, that'll be a minimal. Do you have a, I know you were looking for a spare saddle.
I had, I had four of them.
You got four on hand now?
Yeah.
Okay, because.
Four sets of saddles now.
Okay, so, well, in the spring, or if we have another leak, at least you're prepared for it, so in the spring we can go and get. Those don't take long to, you know, if you get them before they're leaking, there's a hole, they're wet and everything else, so.
Yeah, and it has to be for anybody that had to walk around for an hour and a half, two hours, and it was back on.
Yeah. What was it, what was the cause of that leak?
It fractured, pipe just slipped.
What kind of pipe was that?
Gas iron.
And where, where'd you say, by Ed Woods is there?
Yeah, right by the driveway.
Okay.
On the south side.
All right. Well, anything else? Obviously, the snowplow is going well.
I'm sure it's been really good, and they did a real nice job on the door, they got them all in there, it looked good.
Yep, we fixed up the door one day, all the seams and the bottom, pulled weeds, threw some water on it this morning, it rose for a while, and then it stopped.
Did you get the tools? We gave you an authorization to buy $500 worth of tools, did you go buy some?
Yes, we did, thank you.
Anything you need, all right. Nothing else, then?
I just have one sign down there, a rain sign coming in, I see that big baggies left, I have the signs up there.
Oh. Brian Johnson has the balls for it. Bill, I told him to make the Brian order, the three balls that he likes to hang over it, and we just got the entire Brian, we need to get it put in.
Okay. Is that maybe just a timer?
No, 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 the balls are gone, so we're asking to order them to be put in. He's going to live for that.
Anything else for Nick? Thanks, Nick. Recommend ordinance number 157, point of sale certification for the sewer line laterals. To explain that, if someone sells their house before they can make the transfer of the house, the sewer lateral from the home to the main has to be televised and inspected. That's what this ordinance is about, so that when the new owner gets it, he knows the line coming from the house to the main, which is, you know, the owner's responsibility is in a working order. That's not uncommon, most cities have that, I didn't, so that's what this ordinance is to make sure.
Is this also to make sure they're not running their, some of them into the?
Well, it's to inspect, it's to inspect the lateral, and, yeah, that would be another thing too, it's the same thing, so that the sewer system is correct. You know what I mean? It's just like a septic tank, if you're out in the field, you can't transfer a house unless the septic system has been approved, so that's what this is about. Yes?
That's a difficult problem, some of these guys.
You know, I don't do it, but most laterals are only about 35 to 40 feet long, you know, they're from, you know, 50 feet maybe?
Mine's 300.
Well, they usually go by the foot. You know, Stevie Boyham has a camera that does that, it's going to probably be a couple dollars a foot for televising. You know, obviously on a 300-foot one, it's going to be cheaper than a 30, 40-foot one, just because of the idea of just pulling it over there. They don't take very long, but you'd have to call him and get a price on it to, it really isn't all that expensive, but it's just part of the, it's part of the inspection process now. So that's what the ordinance is about, and I think it's necessary, because otherwise what happens is, you know, as soon as they sell it, then knocking the door, we have a sewer problem, they want Nick to go look at it, and then, and you know, so it's something that should be, I think this should be accepted.
Who would do the inspection, is it a company?
What was that, Bob?
Would do the inspection, is it a company?
No, it's private, you hire someone to do it so that you have an inspection report.
A certified plumber?
Yeah, you'd have to get like a Shannon or, I think Stevie Boyham is certified to put in sewers, coal, ravine, there's a half a dozen people around that can certify that it's in working order. It's basically a buyer protection law, which is good for us, and we don't need no bad sewers, because they always say, well, we think it's a city sewer, and then we spend time inspecting that and checking that out, and find out it isn't our problem anyway. Yes?
How is that enforced?
How's it?
How is the homeowner know that, that that's supposed to be done?
Well, my thought is to contact all of the real estate agents, to alert them that this is an ordinance put into place. They're going to put this same ordinance into place in I-11s and also with East Cooch Sewer District. And so this ordinance actually wouldn't, yeah, so it's, this ordinance actually only affects the properties that are on the radio sewer line, so right now you're not on the radio sewer line, so you wouldn't be affected by this.
I know one thing that, I know one thing that I just signed a real estate agreement with Woody, and part of that, I had to sign all these conditions, and on the conditions were, is there a well on site, you know, has it been abandoned, is there a septic system hasn't been inspected? So to your bester knowledge, and you signed that off, that yes, there's a sewer system that's been inspected, so then the buyer and the seller are both aware of the condition of that sewer, and obviously if it hasn't been inspected, it can't be accepted, so. So the real estate agent, that will be on part of the, again, as point of sale, so it'll be on their terms and the conditions of the sale. It's a really easy one to enforce, I guess, so. Anyway, can we get a recommendation for them?
I'll recommend making sure for the, for the one by seven point of sale certification for the store and ladder.
We have a recommendation as second, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Ashley Levine, Cooch County Historic Museum?
Hello. So we wanted to share with the council some of the things that we have been doing for the city of Rainier, some of the things that we have upcoming, some projects. So in 2019, we had purchased a mobile tour application where people can take walking tours. We developed a walking tour for the City of the National Falls. Initially, they were our anything, and it worked out pretty well, we had really a positive response from that, so we're now developing a walking tour for Rainier. The goal of the walking tour is that it's free for people to use, and our hope is that it drives, you know, interest into these communities, they share history, we are able to post a lot of photographs onto that app, and then it also drags people into businesses. Another project that we're bringing back is our photo galleries, Rainier was the first community building to receive photographs when the preserve and share program started. We don't have photographs right now because the hall was being repainted, and they were also having some issues with taking them down, and they were getting damaged. We have a new way for them to be mounted, so there's less damage to the photographs, there's no damage to the hall, they're more user friendly, so people can take them down, decorate, do whatever they want to do with them, and then put them back. Half of those photographs are done and mounted and ready to be installed, and then we just have a couple more that we have to do, so you will have beautiful, brand new pictures for the hall. And then the other thing is, is our history on tap program. The history on tap program drives a lot of business into the city of Rainier. Every time we've done a show, we bring 80 to over 120 people that come to our program. Our second season, when we opened, we had 135 people come to Looney's, and of course we can't fit 135 people in Looney's, so a lot of people had to go to the muni, which is great for the muni, there's a lot of people going to the grill, now they have the option to go to Cantilever, and people have been curious about what's going to happen with that program because of COVID, we couldn't do our program last year. We want to bring history on tap back, but the issue with the guidelines is that, A, we don't know when the bars will be reopened, and two, when they can, they have to have limited capacity. So to do that safely, we want to limit it to 20 to 30 people, probably have advanced ticketings, but because we can, because we have to do that, and we would charge probably maybe five to $5 to $10 a person, we still want it to be accessible, but the program has to be able to basically break even to at least cover the cost of the exhibits. We want us to continue to do more programming in Rainier, but with the issues that we're having in the Falls with funding, it's getting hard to continue to push programming, not only for our communities, but for children and, you know, everyone else. So we wanted to come to the city of Rainier to see if the city of Rainier was interested or even able to maybe help fund some of that programming. So that's why I'm here today, to see if that may be a possibility.
What tip of the hole are you talking?
If there's any possible funding available through the city of Rainier to help the museum continue to do programs, anything else? I don't know what your city budget looks like, so if there's any, we'll know.
I think we can consider it, maybe make a decision at the next council meeting. We'll talk it over and make it.
So I guess, in the typical season for History on Tap, we've been trying to do one show per month. We tried to break it out last year, or the second season, we tried to do two shows per night, because we had so many people, and we did 50 seats plus standing. This year, we will not be able to do standing room. Looney's group will have to shut down for, it will be a private event, and then it will just be 20 to 30 people. You know, and the other thing is that we can probably only do one show per evening or per month, based on who's going to be participating. Brian Johnson usually participates, but he's going to be 91 in December, birthday's coming up, so I don't know if, you know, he's even going to be a participant. So that's something that's still questionable, but we're gauging for one show per month, starting in January, so long as we don't have to worry about if ours are going to stay closed, and he's, we'll go until May, and then we will have our summer encore if we're able to do that in August in conjunction with Rainier Days, if that's something that happens. Because when we did it with Rainier Days, we had 200 people come to that event.
One thing, and I don't know if it'll fit into, but maybe you can call Marty Goulet. They hired a fellow, Kurt Duffy was his name, he's a professional photographer and promoter out of Minneapolis, and he went around Rainier and hit all the highlights of Rainier, and they have a video of that right now. Cantilever hired that done, and it cost them quite a bit of money, but they had that done. So maybe some of the same things, if not all of them, that you're looking for in Rainier. So maybe just to call Marty Goulet, he might be able to let you look at it and see if that might be doing the same thing you're talking about, this walkabout, so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more thing now, it's open forum. Anybody in the audience with anything?
Couple of things. On the budget, I think your budget would be about $25,000 for a snowfall removal with the county.
What was that again?
Sorry about that. On the budget, I think that the budget is for like $25,000 or $27,000 snow removal with the county.
Yes.
Is that price negotiated?
I think they charge it by an hourly rate, and it's actually pretty reasonable. That's probably an estimate, because Cheryl, did you put that budget in? Because that's what we were charged last year.
Correct.
But last year, there was some back billing that wasn't taken care of, I believe, is that correct? There was some billing from the previous years that wasn't charged?
Yes.
And so, you know, the bill last year was, was a bill last year, $27,000 or something, but it had some previous charges on it. But yeah, it's strictly by the hour is what they charge us. Usually, it's been a lot less than that, but we'll just have to see the weather.
My concern wasn't the $27,000, actually, it is what it is. My question was, is, can we bid that up?
Well, we could. We can bid, except, you know, I don't know if we would. They got a pretty good, they got a pretty good system. I don't know if I'd consider that, because when it snows, they get up in the middle of the night, and they have their routine. I don't think personally that a contractor could even come close to what actual done. You know, they got all the streets Jameson French. I mean, I guess we could look at it, but, you know, I've been more than satisfied with the county, you know, pricing.
They're doing just their role.
Yeah.
They're just doing their role. I can't hear you over it.
But the county roads are actually city roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say that again?
What was that?
You're saying the county road is, like, the county does, or city road, or the county road, you know?
Yeah, they only charge us for, like, when they do Jameson, which is part of the city. They don't charge us for the county, the county road here in front. They don't charge us for a thing. They, the county's been, I gotta pat them on the back, they've been really good. They don't charge us for everything. A lot of times, they'll help us clean ditches and do stuff. I can't say enough how good the county's been. Pretty reasonable to work with on just about every, every aspect that we've ever asked them to help on. Again, you know, different things, so I think we're, I'm satisfied with it. I don't see changing that.
Did you stop giving them that?
Got one more thing here. Go ahead.
One more other thing, Mayor. I know in the past, I think the city council was gonna meet with the whole city council about the water rates.
Yes.
About 20% surcharge. Oh, definitely. This has happened, this has happened.
We have the recent, we have the recent, why is it waiting for the new council meeting?
Because I think, I think, I'd ask for the numbers from Cheryl. I think it's about $200,000 available, made in every year for water services, I mean, most of that has been passed through. But 20% of 200 grand, that's a significant amount of money.
Well, we know that. It's been a, it's been a source of contention, I think, ever since we got on board. But we have one other issue that we're going to take up with them, too, on taxation, that, some taxation issue that we're being charged that shouldn't be, so we're going to be talking to them about that. And so we got a couple items, and I think we're going to schedule that meeting, you know, sometime right after the first year. I got one other thing here. I was going to talk, I ran it by Todd here. I was thumbing through the thing, and I thought it'd be a nice little feature that we could do. I would like to, and I can bring you some pictures of it at the council meeting, but I'd like to maybe buy a phone booth, an antique phone booth, and put it probably down by the dock there, or somewhere down in that area. They have old 1920 phone booths, they're, you know, wood-pane windows and everything else. I think just, I was thinking, maybe we could put some of that remote border water crossing, you know, that, but pretty much everybody does that by app now. I don't even know if they have that iPad anymore that they used to have at Looney's. But that would be a good check-in station, but I thought a, I thought a phone booth at the end of the, by the pier or somewhere down there, you know, by the ice cream shop or something. It'd be a cute little tourist trap. It won't be too long. This generation will probably have, some kids have probably never seen a dialed phone. Now, this don't have a phone in it, but certainly we'll probably keep one in there if we had to. Jennifer?
You could do like a phone charging station.
Can you?
You could do like a phone charging station within it if there's power there. I mean, if you're looking for other reasons to put something inside of it, if that, you have, you could do phone charging for people watching, or people to charge their phone.
It's a good idea. Yeah, I mean, we could have a Superman outfit in there, too. So, I mean, it's just a nice little tourist thing, and I think people would, I know I seen one down in San Francisco, and everybody was taking their pictures by it and stuff like that. It's just, they're about $1,500. They're made in London, they're actually salvaged. There's only a couple of them left, I see on the internet, but I, you know, I'm sure you can buy some somewhere else. Yes?
Is the phone booth sign still on by the overpass at the bus? There used to be a phone booth sign, is that still there? Fits right in.
Well, I'll bring some pictures, and you guys can look it over, and I just wanted to put it on, to throw it out there. It might be, be something that'd be a little more creative, you know. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Oh, go ahead.
It's really, really minor. There was like two boxes of garbage. There was two boxes of garbage on the sidewalk across from the park. We know that Edward got, didn't care. It was like...
It wasn't, I think it was the surveyors.
It was belonging. There were like baby wipes.
It was, it was surveyed the park next to it for quite a while.
No, it was like, right across from the park.
Yeah.
No, this is giveaway free stuff. I think Superman, Super Staff, yeah.
I know some people, they're walking, they're in the parking lot.
We have a recommendation to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Thanks, everybody.